Coming up on UGTV. Coming up on UGTV. A special session of the Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas.
Good evening. I want to welcome everyone here to our final budget workshop of 2015. I'm going to ask the clerk to announce the meeting and call the roll.
A special session has been held on Thursday, July 30th, 2015, at 5:00 PM in the 5th floor conference room regarding a budget workshop. Roll call. Bynum?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Townsend?
Here.
McKeonan?
Here.
Muggia?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Kane?
Here.
Markley?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Philbrook?
Here.
Holland?
Here. We're going to start off on the agenda. One thing, we do have Commissioner Muggia on the phone, which means it's harder for, it's hard to participate on the phone. So in order for her to hear all of the dialogue, it's going to be really important that everyone speak into the microphone. So if I'm especially diligent in asking you to speak directly into the microphone tonight, even more than other times, Commissioner Walker, then we will, I'll just have to do that so that we can complete our conversation. That's good, just like that, just like that. All right. So we're going to start off, the first item is Tremont Quinidero Development Plan.
Thank you, Mayor. This is entitled the Tremont Quinidero Development Plan, but it really is a broader concept than that, so we'll refer to it as the Northeast Master Plan. I know since I've been in office, any number of my constituents and constituents from neighboring districts have asked about what's going to happen in the northeast quarter. And that means different things to different people. But every time we've had strategic planning, I've kind of brought this issue up, thanks to Mr. Bob Hughes, who has been a catalyst for me in trying to understand what might be done that is different than what's done in the past with little ad hoc projects, so that we might look at a strategic way to spur development in the northeast end. So that's what this is about. And from here, if you don't mind, Mayor, I'd like to yield whatever time you were going to allow me to speak to a couple of my fellow commissioners, Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner Bynum, if they want to say anything about the matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commissioner Townsend. And I would say to the commission that we, this request that I'm going to make is a bit late, and I do apologize, but I just think that the time is upon us to move forward with some progress in the northeast quadrant of Wyandotte County. And with that said, I'd like to put forth a request, along with Commissioner Townsend, to request a commitment, and I say the word commitment as opposed to an allocation in the budget for the 2016, to use as a potential investment as a tool to empower staff and ourselves to go out and find matching dollars to fund a comprehensive master plan for the northeast section and quadrant of Wyandotte County. This is not an actual allocation, but it would be something that we could use as a tool to go out and ask the funding community as it stands to invest in Wyandotte County, and it shows that we have a commitment from Wyandotte County as well. We've talked with the staff and had a lengthy conversation, and we feel that a plan would run in the neighborhood of about $120, $120,000. $120,000. $120,000 would probably get the first, $120,000 would probably get the first sentence in, but $120,000. And so the reason why we use the term commitment is that if we don't find funding, it has no impact upon the budget. We've also talked about the fact that there have been plans that we've utilized, for instance, the State Avenue Plan, and anyone can correct me, but as I understand, it didn't cost as little or anything to get that done at all. So if it's possible for us to find the funding in and of itself to finance this or to fund this, then it wouldn't cost the government anything. But this would allow us to have a seed, it would allow us to have a show of that we've got some skin in the game, and to help us to leverage further dollars. And that's what we'd like to ask for tonight, because we think that the northeast quadrant of town has been disinvested, it's been disenfranchised for far too long. And we'd like to take this time to utilize this and then go out and use that seed to go out and try to secure further dollars. So with that, I'd throw the, yield the floor back to either Commissioner Townsend or Commissioner Bynum.
Commissioner Bynum.
So I believe the request is $60,000.
That's correct.
A commitment from the body for $60,000, and a commitment from us to raise the additional 60 because of the $120,000 cost estimate that staff has given us. And the reason we're asking, even though we know it's late, is because planning staff has informed us that even if we had the money right now, they could not start due to their staffing issues until possibly September of next year. So if they can't start until September of next year, that's this budget cycle, and that's why we're here with this late request. But I think the request is valid, $60,000, with us and stakeholders finding the other half.
Commissioner Townsend?
Thank you. The other thing I wanted to mention from the meeting with the planning staff the other day, that let's say we had the money available to do this master plan today, and that staff had the time to do it or get started on it immediately. We estimate it would take about, was it 16 months?
Eighteen.
Eighteen months? Number keeps going up. Do I hear 25? What is the number again?
Twelve to eighteen.
Twelve to eighteen months. So the point is, we need to get going, and we would like, as we said, at least a commitment from the body to find $60,000 in the budget contention upon and allow planning staff to start looking now for the other $60,000 to leverage it. Thank you.
Kane and then Philbrook.
Okay, so we're wanting 60, but we don't need it for 18 months? Is that correct?
No, the 18 months would be the approximate time it would take to do the master plan. That's why we'd like to start now with getting the funding together.
Would it be possible to do 30 this year and 30 next year? I'm just asking.
Well, now, we're not making this request to raise the tax rate, so we want to hold that.
Do you have $30,000 to do that? Sorry.
Well, I would probably say if they're looking for a commitment, and the project will be in 2016, then we'd probably try to keep it all in fiscal year 2016. I believe what I'm hearing is a request of this governing body that if we go out and, over the course of the next 12 months, raise $60,000 in matching funds, that this governing body would be willing to allocate and make that a priority as we either amend next year's budget or look to future that we'd put that much money toward this kind of project, that we wouldn't necessarily have to act on it tonight or amend our 2016 budget. You know, I'm hopeful too that we would identify, you know, things are going really good in the fundraising efforts like in our Rosedale Master Plan. If that continues at the level it's at, you know, maybe there's $10,000 left on the table from that deal that we had allocated from our own budget or something like that. So there may be some other ways to adjust that. So that's what I'm hearing. You're looking for that commitment, so we know if we're building the budget next year, or I do, that if we get matching fund in place, we would be able to work in that direction.
Commissioner Philbrook and then Commissioner Walker.
So point of information, are we allowed to do any motions, or do we just make recommendations at this point?
I think from, I think if we have a consensus at this table and we're not making a budget change request at this time, it would come into amended 2016, then I don't think we need a motion for that. I think the, I think we're looking for a consensus at this point.
Okay. Well, I'm for the 60 and for going out to OPM, other people's money, to do this, because I know we're bringing on an additional person to work the northeast for development. So now is the time, and things seem to be popping. So let's grab it and go.
Commissioner Walker?
It's been said, I support this. I would join with the consensus.
Well, and the good news is, we've had good success. We were able to find, win a grant with Mid-America Regional Council for the K-32 study. We were able to secure philanthropic money for the Healthy Campus, $115,000 for that, a lot of funding for the Rosedale Master Plan with stakeholders down there. So we have shown that these master plans are fundable, and that there's groups out there that can help. And I think if we continue to be aggressive, I think it would be, anyone would be hard pressed to say the northeast area does not need a master plan. So Commissioner Bynum?
Just one last quick thing, and that is that we're sorry that it's at the last minute. We were only able to schedule our very first conversation about it two days ago, only because of all of the other work we're doing on the budget and work schedules. And so we do apologize for that, but we are grateful.
But only so much, because not knowing when to bring this up, every time we've kind of met, I've brought it up. It might have been called something different. But thanks to staff and all of the commissioners who formally and informally have said that it's time, and the constituents from various parts of the city have said it's time. So thank you.
All right. We'll take a straw poll in terms of support, so we can gauge the level of support. If you would be in favor of this moving forward, would you raise your hand? All right, that looks unanimous. Commissioner Muggia, would you like to weigh in on the straw poll?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
All right, thank you. So it's unanimous, and we'll move forward. All right, the next item is CDBG, and we have the report from Ms. Wilba, who has prepared the document. It's gone through some iterations. And if we go to, if you can go to where your slides here, when we look at this, we have, the way it's going now is we have $400,000 for ABC Argentine Highland Crest, and emergency home repair went back from $200,000 to $300,000. So the only, and the rest of the allocations for homeless funds and all the other recurring, there was broad consensus on. I would say there's been broad consensus on 90% of this. There is still concern about the $400,000 ABC application for Argentine and Highland Crest. And I will say this, we've worked hard on this budget in terms of establishing a consensus, and I think we've done a very good job. There are some sticking points once in a while, and I think this is one of them. And so I want to raise some issues with this. I've asked a lot of questions since our budget hearing on Monday, a couple, 10 days ago, and have asked and received some information that I find to be troubling in the way that it looks. The legal issue is, is there impropriety? I don't think there's any impropriety. I don't think anyone's making any accusations of legal impropriety. The ethical standard is the appearance of impropriety. And so whether or not something is ethical is not only is it legal, but that it doesn't look bad. And so I have some concerns about how I think this $400,000 looks, and I want to walk you through five incidents that in their totality, I feel like look bad and help, and hurt our ability to convince the public that they look bad, or that they, that we're doing things the right way. So again, no accusation of impropriety, simply my perspective that I believe it doesn't look good. And so I'd like to walk through that at this time. And I'd ask my staff if they could please pass out the sheet that I've prepared to look at. It has five dates on it. As that's being passed out, I'll say, we've done a lot of work to increase the transparency of our processes. One is obviously putting all of our meetings on television. We've done a lot to try to streamline our processes in terms of how we're moving forward. So in light of that, I think we could do a better job in the transparency, or apparent transparency of this, that would help us move forward in a positive way. So I want to read through these and just share with you my view, and then I have a specific idea about the $400,000. On January 29th of 2014, I believe everyone has this, I think Tim can put this up on the screen too. On January 29th, the first year that formal applications were required, the Unified Government received 38 proposals totaling $6.2 million in requests. Nine were potentially eligible for CDBG, and only two projects were recommended for funding. One was doing real work for $50,000. And the other was an ABC/ONDA application for $258,000 in CDBG appropriations for a housing project that's adjacent to Commissioner Muggia's home on Strong Avenue, in an area where many of the parcels at the site are owned by ONDA. On July 31st of that same year, ABC is designated an additional $500,000 in CDBG reappropriations for Turner Highland Crest, but they didn't fill out, there was not an application. It was a reappropriation. It was not an application. It didn't go through the formal area. My concern is, is whether, regardless of the legitimacy of that program, and I support the $500,000 for Highland Crest, my concern is, when there was no formal application to come in the front door, that it looks bad for us in terms of the optics of it, in terms of how they received 258 with an application and an additional $500,000 for another project without an application. February 20th to July of 2015, the UG received 14 proposals totaling $1.1 million in requests for, during our public budget hearing. Five of these are potentially CDBG eligible. Only one is awarded for recommendation. This funding recommendation will be voted on tonight by the commission, and this is the ABC/ONDA recommended to receive 400,000, originally 500 requested, but received 400,000 in recommendation for, quote, "Argentine and Highland Crest Economic Development." Further, on June 2nd, 2015, Commissioner Muggia presents a financial pro forma to the CDBG Subcommittee regarding the development of 14 Villa-style units. The pro forma, which lists ONDA as the project manager, contemplates $500,000 of CDBG money and a $50,000 development fee. There are layers of concerns about this. One, ONDA's not eligible to receive CDBG money nor a development fee from said money. But also, ONDA had a live application in front of this committee for $500,000 that they had submitted and was being considered. That $500,000 recommendation was made on June 8th, the next week, to the full commission. But I don't know that any other organization had access for a presentation to the Subcommittee. My understanding was the decision was going to be made based on the paper applications and not on interviews. And my concern is how it looks, regardless of how legitimate, how it looks that one group and none others had an opportunity to make a presentation to the Subcommittee that would be making the decision. And further, the presentation was made by the commissioner who's sitting on the funding committee. I just think that's a troubling look, and I think it's hard to say to others outside of that process that that was a fair process to other organizations who did not have that opportunity to present to the Subcommittee. And finally, on June 25th, ABC received $45,000 in casino grants from Commissioner Muggia. ONDA is listed in that application as well as a key community partner in the application, an issue that has been raised by our Ethics Administrator. I want to go through with the $400,000. I support the $400,000 staying with the new vision of economic development and for housing. My concern is the allocation to ABC. I believe we need to move it into, protect it. We don't want to send it back to HUD, but we also want to make sure that there's a fair and open process for all groups to apply for this money. I have seven reasons why, if it passes in its current form, I will veto our five-year plan. Number one, the Ethics Administrator wrote plainly in the closing sentence of her July 27th opinion, quote, "The appearance is that there would be a sharing of funds between ABC and ONDA," end quote. I don't believe a black marker through a line on the application changes that. I heard several individuals speak Monday at the public budget hearing, expressing concern about this process. I just received another letter from Mount Carmel Redevelopment Corporation saying that if they had known this, this money was available, they would have applied for it themselves. The CDBG Subcommittee changed the focus to bricks and mortar in 2015, and no one was notified of that change. They recommended just one application that had come in before the paradigm change was adopted by the commission, and I don't think there was enough opportunity for other community organizations to apply. Number four, ABC is slated to receive $258,000, $500,000, and another $400,000. ABC is slated to receive $1.2 million, or 96% of all new non-recurring allocations that have been given out in the last two years. One organization is receiving 96% of the new allocations given out over the last two years. The UG has rejected 49 other applications with $6.6 million in requests, and even allocated money without an application at all. ABC/ONDA also, in their application for this $400,000, lists the following budget expenses: personnel of 30,000, supplies of 5,000, and other of $465,000. I don't think you can put $465,000 in the other category of your application and expect it to be funded. We don't have a plan here. We have an idea. And I don't think we give $400,000 to an idea. I think we have to give it to a plan. Number six, ABC has not spent the first $758,000 in allocations that they have. In fact, I've not seen evidence that they've spent any of the first $758,000 in allocations. And I don't think it's good practice to give money to a group that has not yet been successful with the first amount. I also think it's unfair to other groups who could put that money to use immediately and not have to wait for someone else to spend their money and receive additional money on top of it. Finally, ABC has never done a residential development. And now with ONDA withdrawing from the application just yesterday, from the application, I believe ABC no longer has the capacity to do this project. They've never done a residential project. They've not spent any of the money they have already. And I don't think that they have the capacity to complete this work. And I think it would not be responsible for us to give them additional money before they demonstrated that. So that's my presentation tonight. I am open to conversation, and I hope we can work this out in a, in a manner that is, where we can reach a consensus by the end of the evening. Commissioner Markley?
So first, I'd like to comment on the June 2nd meeting, because I think it's been mischaracterized, and Mayor, you weren't there. So it's not your fault. You might have heard something different. So during the course of our discussions with HUD, we were told by HUD and sort of discussed with HUD that it was easier to talk about how regulations apply when you talk about a specific project. Because as we were going back and forth, it was, it's just confusing to try to talk about hypotheticals, and can you do this, and can you do that? And there's a million different rules, as you all know. So Commissioner Muggia brought a pro forma of what this project might look like, so that we could see how it would or wouldn't cash flow with the use of CDBG funds. So it wasn't a presentation meant to be a presentation of the project to the committee. It was meant to be an educational discussion with HUD as to how the funds could be spent and how they couldn't be spent, and how those rules applied. So I just want to make that clear, because it was, I don't think anybody on the committee thought that was a presentation of the project. It was meant to be an example for HUD to give us feedback on how the rules would or wouldn't apply in a certain situation. The CDBG Committee formed at the Mayor's recommendation two years ago, and it has been one of the hardest working committees I have ever led. They were tasked with finding the most effective way of using our CDBG funds in light of our strategic plan, and it became more clear every day the complexity of that task. They met regarding this year's budget more times in total than this entire commission has met to discuss this year's budget. Medians were noticed for the benefit of the commissioners and the public. The committee reviewed the commission-led and approved process of accepting public applications. They set aside time to meet with HUD to learn about what types of projects would be best funded through CDBG. They, along with staff and our five-year plan consultant, logged a record number of hours trying to find the manner of using CDBG funds that would most benefit this county. I am very proud of their dedication into understanding this complex funding system, and I'm very proud to have worked with each of them in this capacity. Because of their willingness to accept and tackle with great dedication very difficult work above their normal commission duties, it was particularly offensive when Mayor Holland brought forward on July 13th, just two weeks before budget adoption, a concern he apparently believed was critical, but a concern into which he had done no prior research. The mayor and commissioners had more than four months to review the budget application submitted by the public, and the mayor has multiple staff members in his own office to assist in that review. He has spent many hours in the presence of committee members, including one-on-one sessions with each commissioner per his own tradition, offering him every opportunity to raise any questions regarding the CDBG application submitted or the intent of that committee. Never once did the mayor ask a committee member about the ABC application prior to publicly alleging ethical violations on July 13th. As we all know now, and I will state again for the public, our Ethics Administrator confirmed by memo this week that no ethics violation occurred, and merely recommended that our application form be amended to clarify that only those entities receiving money should be listed as partnering agencies on our budget application. The Ethics Administrator's remedy, I quote, "Having said the above, but asking all of you to cooperate with each other, a simple solution to this is to have Mario Escobar from ABC go to City Hall, and prior to the vote on July 30th, 2015, take a marker and delete ONDA as a partnering agency. I clearly can't compel that, but it would resolve the problem and allow a potential it would resolve the problem and allow a potentially worthwhile project to go forward." The procedural concern raised by the ethics administrator is easily resolved. What is less easily resolved is a mayor who publicly demanded that commissioners pick up the phone and call before raising controversial issues in a public meeting, but failed to follow his own advice before attempting to damage the reputation of multiple hard-working and honorable commissioners. That being said, I would call for a straw poll that we, as Ms. Benin stated, cooperate with each other and follow her advice. ABC has already, for their part, removed ONDA's name from the application per the advice of Ms. Benin.
Okay. Commissioner Walker.
Mayor, this has certainly been the most troubling aspect of being on the commission since I have taken office. It may not be for the other commissioners that have been here longer, but there are a number of things that need to be said. Number one, I certainly don't fancy myself the best lawyer in the world, but I have read this opinion at least four times. And I can find nothing in this opinion that would suggest the slightest impropriety or wrongdoing on the part of ONDA, on the part of Ann Murgia, on the part of Mario Escobar, and the, I forget the number, eight, nine, 10, extremely honorable, decent people, taxpayers, blue collar people that have been drug through the mud in this particular instance. I know it was not your intent to do so, but the aspersion that they have somehow engaged in some type of unethical activity is out there. A simple reading of Facebook would show most people that there are opinions all over the board on this matter. But I do want to read one thing from the opinion. There's many things in here I'd like to read, but it's publicly known, it's been publicly read, I assume, by the people that are interested. It said, "Commissioner Murgia is also entitled as the executive director, that would be of ONDA, to partner with any local or private group, et cetera, so long as ONDA does not receive any UG funds, and she is not inappropriately using her title as UG commissioner. Any commissioner is entitled to act in such capacity so long as they do not personally receive UG funds or have a substantial interest in the entity." I would say that going back through the history of committees and subcommittees, these are not secret confidential executive sessions in which you are prohibited from reaching out to the public. In fact, it's my understanding, Mayor, that at the CDBG meetings, you had staff attend most, if not all, of the meetings. So it was well-known what was occurring in this committee to your office. I would say that if I knew that funding was available, it would be my responsibility as a commissioner to go out and reach out to the groups in my district, which I guess we can say I've got the south half and Ms. Bynum has the north, but we both really represent the entire community. And we should reach out and tip them off, if that's the word, that there's going to be money available and they should apply for it. I am at a loss for YCHWC, Habitat, Northeast, none of the groups that are available. And these are great groups. I have no problem with any of them and what they're doing. In fact, it's my belief, it'd be my hope, that any group that wants to build houses in Highland Crest or in any other part of this community should be able to go anywhere where they have an opportunity and do reconstruction. I hope you would agree with that. There is no exclusive term. Where you want to do your work, you do it. And I'm troubled by this because this is a secular government. And I respect your views. I respect you as a man. I respect you as a pastor, but I do not always agree with your optics of a situation. Just the same way I assume the Bible is not always interpreted by two pastors in the same mouth.
Do you want a straw poll?
Well, I'd like a little bigger number here. So having said that, I'm, I mean, I go back to this opinion. It's clear there was nothing wrong. There was nothing done wrong. Your sensibilities of right and wrong, you make reference to a building that's near Commissioner Murgia's house. I'm going to tell you that I know that building. I know that building long before Commissioner Murgia was there, long before the housing development occurred in that area. And I can tell you that probably 30 years ago, that building should have been torn down. It is a troubling eyesore at a commercial intersection in the Argentine area. There are seven buildings, if I've counted right in my mind, on the north side of Strong Avenue across from the fire station that are in dilapidated, terrible condition. Now, down the road, the fact that Commissioner Murgia lives a block away from there, is that going to be an impediment to ABC or somebody else because her neighborhood improves? I live four blocks from the Highland Crest area. If Highland Crest area improves, I might tangentially get some benefit in my assessed value because I now live in a better area, a better attractive area. I mean, we can take this to whatever length. I can point out all kinds of appearances of conflict that the public sees that have commented to me on how we do various things like hiring practices and who gets jobs and promotions and other things which, they're bona fide. They're legal, but people think there's an appearance. An appearance is not an actuality. And that's the only way government works in a secular way. I would say, in closing, that I read this opinion. I'm not going to fault Wilba or whoever drew up the form. They find more fault with the form than they do with the process. Say Commissioner Murgia can partner with anybody, that can mean give advice. Certainly, I would call on her. I would call on the directors, CHWC. I would call on anybody that has done this kind of work, and that would be a good business practice. I would also tell you, and I don't mean any criticism, Wilba, would you happen to know how much money? And if you don't, I'd like to have that number, not necessarily before tonight or the budget. How many hundreds of thousands of dollars or millions that we have given CHWC since they first began? Or, for that matter, Habitat for Humanity or any other major development group, City Vision Ministries, how much money or tax benefits we've given them?
No, Commissioner. I do not have it at my fingertips right now.
Well, I think there is a number, and I think we would all be surprised at how much money has gone to these groups in prior years. So the fact that CHWC and Habitat did not apply, well, you can read it that they didn't know about it, and they should have been informed. Or you can just simply say that they did not choose to apply because they didn't think they were going to get any money. And that's a choice you make. I'm welcoming, I would welcome applying for money and doing work. And I would welcome them in Highland Crest. But this hurts me particularly bad when we change this from the Highland Crest area, because I can tell you for a fact that the Argentine area, until the advent of ONDA and ABC, did not get hundreds of thousands of dollars in CDBG money. I don't believe any CDBG money of any significance has ever gone into Highland Crest. And yet every commissioner I've spoken to, and I have not spoken to all of you, admits to me that that area is in dire need of redevelopment dollars. So when others feel neglected, I'm going to tell you, you're not the only part of the community that's neglected. Highland Crest is neglected, and there is a need there for those dollars. So I will not be supporting, at least initially, this, I'm standing pat that the money was properly done through an open process.
Commissioner McKeonan.
Thank you, Mayor. Get back to my notes here. You know, as a member of this committee, there's almost nothing I can say that's not going to come off potentially as being defensive or making excuses, but I want to point out just a couple of things here. First of all, I think there was an issue of timing that we did not fully anticipate when we started this process. We were to vision and create a new five-year plan for the use of CDBG. Turned out, the first year of the new five-year plan was this budget year that we're voting on today. That puts us in a real bind because it compresses the time that we have available to have a thoughtful, meaningful, strategic discussion about how we could shape the CDBG program to have the biggest impact. We are not able to have that thoughtful discussion. We are instead under the gun, let's get something funded because that deadline's coming, and we have the 30-day or the 90-day or whatever publication deadline, and it's coming. So that is not to make that as an excuse, but it is an overlay here that because we did not start the five-year process earlier than we did, the planning process for the five-year plan, we got compressed. And I don't believe that led to the best possible outcome that we could have had. There have been several concerns expressed to me in the process of this. The first concern you alluded to, and that's a concern that too much money was being shifted toward potential bricks and mortar-type development projects at the expense of projects that could be labeled under the broad heading of social service agencies or the social services. And I have said that I do believe that's a good shift. It's probably a discussion we should have all had as a group long before any decisions were made on funding. We didn't, all right? We have something we need to correct now. Let's see how we can correct that. I do believe it's the right shift, but, you know, I'm okay if we shift all of our money over into the social services, because as many of you know, I've just started reading this book, The American Healthcare Paradox, that suggests that our very poor health outcomes in the United States are not because we don't spend more than anybody else in the world on healthcare. Our poor outcomes are due to the fact that we don't spend as much on the social services, on supporting the social determinants of health. So if we were to reallocate all that money into the social services, we would still benefit. I just don't think we would build our community the way we want to. And this I've said to everybody who's asked, I really do think if we value supporting the social services and programs like emergency home repair, we need to thoughtfully and intentionally move that money into the general fund, where we control the funding. We make sure those programs happen. Because if I'm not mistaken, the Senate last week contemplated a 93% reduction in home. Did I get that wrong, Wilba?
That's correct.
They did. So these funds are so volatile because we don't control them, I would propose, and if we'd had this discussion a while ago, I would have proposed to the whole group that we consider project funding for that volatile funding, and that we consider those things that we really want out of the general fund, where we control the funding, and we make sure that those programs happen without interruption. So there's a little tidbit toward our continuing discussion about strategy for the five-year plan. A second concern that has been expressed to me is about the clarity and the timing of the application process. And, you know, I understand, and the ethics administrator, in her opinion, said, "We could use a better form. We could use better instructions. We could use better publication." I cannot argue with any of those things. Having said, I can't argue, I think we're better than we were two years ago. So we are in an evolving process. I cannot say to anybody, "It is the best," because it's not, and we all know that. But it is evolving, and I think it has gotten better. The third piece about a potentially improper relationship between a sitting commissioner and the agency that ultimately received the funding this year, I think that that has been handled by other people. I don't think that our ethics administrator has found that to be the case. But Mrs. Shivers, and I don't have my glasses on, so I don't know if she's here tonight.
She's back here.
Okay. So Mrs. Shivers, when she came in the other night and she spoke at the public hearing, she brought up the one thing that had been on my mind about this year's process. ABC, they did their due diligence. They played by the rules they put in their application. But she brought up the fact that she has been asked to demonstrate capacity before getting any more money. And I thought, you know what, that probably is something that we should all think about when we think about serial applications to the same group. And so I had thought that a potential compromise in this situation might be that we broadly allocate those $400,000 under the heading of rehabilitation, reconstruction, whatever the broad heading is now, but hold them back from ABC pending a demonstration of capacity. And Mr. Escobar, I know that you are working really hard on these projects that you already have lined up. And so it occurs to me that rather than piling on, we could give you some breathing room to accomplish those projects, to demonstrate the capacity to bring a project home to completion. And if we held the 400 back, we might establish some criteria and a timeframe which demonstrate acceptable progress in an acceptable time. And if ABC meets those criteria, the 400,000 is released as per the initial application. And if they don't, that money goes back into a new RFP offering. So I thought of this this afternoon, thought I'd just throw it out and offer it as a potential for solving a problem that is immediate and before us today, and that's all I'll say.
All right. Commissioner Townsend.
Thank you. I think I want to continue down the path that Commissioner McKeonan has walked down and opened up. For me, this was not so much about appearance of anything, and I was also on the committee, but I will say I have the utmost regard for the work that was done by Commissioners McKeonan and Murgia and Markley. They were there when I could not be, and I tried to keep up with what was going on, but there's nothing like being in the room. So I do believe that the straw poll we took, if that stands, I don't know if we need another motion, I absolutely positively believe that minimally $300,000 should be officially put in that emergency home repair fund. When I came to that last committee meeting, it had been zeroed. I think Commissioner Markley said it correctly a couple of weeks ago. It's a philosophical difference. But as I said, I think we are all trying to do the best for our constituents. Some can afford better housing than others. Some may not be able to afford new housing, but they're desperately trying to stay where they are and avoid getting into problems with code violations. So I absolutely believe we need that safety net. One of the reasons that I can speak personally about why NIDAC did not apply this year is that last year, with this capacity situation, I told them, "You have to use what you have already." And so I could not support an application, a new application, if they had not completed or eaten what's on their plate already. So to me, where this other $400,000 goes is a matter of procedure and treating similarly situated entities the same way. I like Commissioner McKeonan's idea about holding this money only until we could determine capacity. But I'd like it maybe to be held so that anybody who had demonstrated capacity to be fair, because that's what I'm talking about. Maybe we do need to reopen that process just for that. So anybody that is clear to any and everybody now, you can't sit on the money. You have to use what you already have, and that's what NIDAC has done, and that's why they did not apply. So I think that would be the fairer thing to do and just reopen it for anybody. And that's what I would move to see done. And that's what I would move to see done.
All right. Is there anyone else that would, anyone that hasn't spoken yet that would? Commissioner Murgia, Commissioner Kane asked if you would like to speak.
Yes, I would like to speak.
Okay, go ahead.
So, Mayor, I am trying to do this all by cell phone.
Can we get some more volume, possibly? Go ahead, Commissioner.
So I'm trying to do this all by cell phone, which means I'm trying to talk on the phone and also at the same time read the document that your five concerns that you provided to staff. So it's very difficult for me to do that, but I'll see if I can, hang on, I'm trying to hold this up. It's not allowing me to do that. Hold on, one second, I'm just seeing if I can get this working. Okay, okay. Here we go. I think I can read this and talk. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll start off with your first concern. It appears that, that you are concerned about where my house is located, my personal residence, in proximity to this project. I do live in Argentina. I'm, I live at 2502 Strong Avenue. It is next to the 14-unit villa project that you discussed, absolutely. I'm really not clear about what you're trying to imply, but I will tell you, the project is next to my house, but the reason the project occurred is because it is attached to a five-and-a-half-million-dollar project on the other side that ONDA is doing in the way of housing for 55 and older, people 55 and older. I'll also remind the Commission that this is low-income housing. So if it's concern that you're expressing, I'm not concerned. I have very low-income housing that surrounds my personal residence where I raised my family, and I'm okay with that. It doesn't concern me. I think when you're gonna be a leader in a community, you need to lead by example. And one of the areas that we've really struggled in Wyandotte County is having people be accepting of very low-income people. I'm very accepting of that, and I have no objection to it being next to my house if that was the concern. So, Mayor, you're gonna have to help me here. What was your, what was your second concern? Can you keep it kind of short, though, 'cause you break up when you talk for a long time?
Yeah, my second item was that ABC had received an additional $500,000 in the same funding year without submitting an application.
Yeah, you know, I, I don't know about that. I apparently missed that. I was not involved in the actual filling out of the application that ABC fills out. Again, we're just there to provide technical advice to ABC. You're right when you say that they have not built a residential structure. They manage currently a three-and-a-half-million-dollar grocery store in Argentina that you would know as the Save-A-Lot, Save-A-Lot off 18th Street Expressway. So I, I can't speak to that, Mayor, because either I missed that meeting or, you know, I, I just, I don't know if that was the case. I'm sure what you're saying is correct. So your, your next question, your concern was what?
The next question was that ABC and ONDA were recommended for this $400,000, the next $400,000, and that's the $400,000 actually that we're talking about now, because no one has made any, I have not suggested that we should not do the 285, nor have I suggested we shouldn't do the 500,000. It's the 400,000 here, and one of the concerns I raised about that is that the application only says personnel and other, $465,000 of other. It looks like we're funding an idea and not a plan, and I think that's problematic. In that 400,000 allocation, it's also the money that represented the difference and the focus that others were not allowed to, that did not know to apply for. They were not not allowed, but they did not know to apply for.
Okay, so it sounds like you are concerned about the way the budget is written out in the applications. And I will tell you, I have not seen that budget. I have not looked at that in detail, and I don't have it in front of me right now. So I, I don't know what to tell you there. You would need to speak to Mr. Escobar and his Board of Directors. I know the general concept of what the application consisted of. I know what Mr. Escobar asked me, asked my advice on, which was the acquisition and rehabilitation of homes in the Highland Crest neighborhood. But as to the details of how that money would be spent, since that money does not come to ONDA, that really was not a concern of mine in the role that I was playing with ABC. You brought up that I presented the 14-unit cottages or villas that you have, that are next to my house. I did not present on that, the budget you're talking about. That was presented by ONDA's attorney and development attorney, Ford Maxwell with the PostNL Law Firm. And again, I think Markley has summed that up well for you. That was an example, development yield of view. No, Mayor, from your work with the downtown healthy campus, are very complicated in urban settings. And as a result, the committee that was attending the meeting, which consisted of McKeonan, Markley, and myself, decided it was best to present an example. So the Commission has something to base the strategy that they were developing off of. So we used that example, and like I said, I think Markley spoke to that exactly how it occurred. You mentioned something about casino money. I'm a little apprehensive to talk about casino money, given this is a public hearing and we didn't notice casino money discussions. But since you brought it up, I will comment on it. You mentioned something about the Ethics Administrator being concerned about that. Well, I actually spoke to the Ethics Administrator yesterday to get some clarity on your interpretation of her ruling and my interpretation of her ruling. And during that conversation, we veered off into a very in-depth discussion in regard to ethics. And never one time did she mention any concerns about ONDA being listed as a partner to any organization anywhere in Wyandotte County. However, she did mention concerns about the unified government's actual application that in the future, for the benefit of all Commissioners and even you, Mayor, if they are to be listed as partners, it's great for transparency, but there needs to be a section added that says clearly that elected officials in any capacity are not financially benefiting. And really, we all know that, and we all abide by that rule, to my knowledge, but she wants that added to our actual application for the public's clarity on that. So I had a great discussion with her, and as I said, she's not raised any issues with me, and I was very clear, in fact, my exact words to Ms. Benin were, Ms. Benin, have I violated ethics in any way? And she reported back to me, no. And I said, well, that does not seem to be the interpretation of our mayor. And she said, quote, "As far as I am concerned, you have not violated ethics, and this matter is closed." And that was basically the end of our discussion. Mayor, again, and if I've missed, if I've missed a question that you want me to answer, do you have that before I just make my?
No, that was, those are the five items that I listed.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, all I really have to say is, I'm really disappointed that if you had five major concerns about this, that still, never one time have you picked up the phone to call me. It is exactly what Commissioner Markley said. You asked me to do that with you, and I've done that since you have requested that, and you have not returned that same kind of treatment. That is concerning. And candidly, I will tell you, good leaders, in my opinion, gather their facts before they jump to conclusions, and that includes speaking to people that they are making accusations about. Your accusations, Mayor, are very, very personal. I think it's unprofessional and inappropriate. And if you were concerned, you absolutely could've called me, and I could've explained all of this, instead of just turning into some political theater. I'm very disappointed in that. It is what it is. The situation has occurred. I am also disappointed that after the straw poll was already taken, taken, you're asking for another straw poll to be taken. I am also disappointed to hear that you are calling Commissioners and threatening them that if they don't change their vote, that it's gonna cause problems for them. I really hope, for whatever reason, that you are angry at me, for what apparently I don't know, that if you want to really resolve this and move all of Wyandotte County forward and rebuild what I thought was a great relationship with you and the Commission, that we get together as soon as possible and talk about whatever is bothering you. With that, I will close and defer to whatever is appropriate.
All right. We have, I don't see any other Commissioners stepping in, but we do have two options on the table. Commissioner Walker.
I just wanted to say that in listening to Commissioner McKeonan, and regardless of how this, this comes out tonight, I, I, in most instances, think disagreement and lack of unanimity is probably a good thing. Too much unanimity does not always end in the best result. However, the thing that troubles me, and I heard it the last time, that I heard there was a rule that if you have money you haven't spent, you can't get any more money. Well, that, that was a rule that I was told did not in fact exist, and that we had never followed that rule. I think the idea of being confined to an area because that's where your home base is and you can't do work anywhere else, there's no such rule in CDBG or in the federal regulations that I could find. Admittedly, they are voluminous and somnambulant to read. But regardless of the outcome of this, what's clear to me and what has bothered me is, is that as a lawyer, there's this thing called ex post facto. You can't create a rule and apply it ex post facto to events that occurred prior. And I hear some of that in the comments tonight, that, you know, we're gonna, these are, these are the rules, or this is what people understood, and when in fact, they never existed. I, I would certainly urge the Mayor to convene the Committee as a whole or its strategic planning, and we chart out these specifics that, you know, I certainly have no problem with any CDC or CHODO working anywhere in this, in this community, if it's legal and the funding permits it. I'd like to see lots of people coming to Highland Crest, CHWC, Habitat, well, ONDA, if, if they have other, other funding, ABC, all of them. And if we wanted to make that clear, and if we want to make some of these rules regarding CDBG funding about not spending money or not being allocated money if you haven't spent your other money, then let's make that clear. Let's make that a policy. I, I like written policies and prefer those to the sort of, after the fact, well, everybody knew that's the way we did business, because no, no, they didn't. Everybody did not know we did business that way. And I don't know that we do do business that way, so. I would ask that you include that in either a special session or in the strategic planning.
I have Commissioner McKeonan, Philbrook, and then Kane.
So, a little bit off the topic of this discussion, but I want to say that, you know, I'm a, I'm a big boy. If I make a mistake, I'll own it and I'll learn from it and I'll move on from it. But I would ask, this is an open request to all the staff within the UG. If you see me starting to walk off a cliff in the future, if you say to yourself, oh, I got a bad feeling about this, I would appreciate it if you would pull me aside and privately say, you're wrong, before I make a mistake rather than after I do. So that's just kind of an open request that I really, and I've expressed this to the Mayor and I've expressed this to Doug, that I certainly, I think we all value a more close strategic relationship between electeds and staff and that we help each other to achieve higher heights, that's kind of a redundant, but higher heights than either of us could alone. So just, I'm gonna throw that out there. Thank you.
Commissioner Philbrook, and then Commissioner Kane.
Thank you, Commissioner McKeonan. I really appreciate the, the thought you've put into the possible way to remediate this that serves everybody. I also want to thank our fellow Commissioners for being very pleasant as we're going through this nasty little process, because sometimes we get very emotional, and I being one that does. All right, pick on me. It's all right. I admit to it. And, and I also agree with Hal that if there are these unwritten policy things that we think we know, that really aren't there, that maybe are convenient to use now and maybe not last time, and, you know, all that kind of, I'm not, I'm gonna use the word murky, creates a murky atmosphere for people to operate in. I think we need to address those, and I appreciate you bringing that up, Hal. Okay, I really do. I don't think that there was any intent from anybody to hold back information or create an atmosphere that, that this happened, but I feel it happened because, as Hal said, they felt pressured to come up with some answers in a really fast manner, and they'd done some extremely in-depth work. I understand with a whole lot of meetings with, with the federal people and so on to see what our options really are. So I can't say that I don't appreciate all the wonderful work that everybody's put into it. I'm just saddened that it turned out, you know, with, with some of the problems that we've had. And then I know that between our employees and the Commission, that we're gonna make this look very good, and it's gonna look excellent by the time this comes around next year, because there's no reason why it shouldn't, because now we have the problems in front of us. They're all out there.
Commissioner Kane.
Mayor, could you explain that, when you mentioned about if we voted, did the straw poll the way we did, that you would veto? Could you explain what you're talking about?
Yeah, so we have three things on the table. We have the original straw poll that was taken 10 days ago on Monday here, where the decision of the Commission was, on a six-four vote, that they would go ahead and allocate the $400,000 to ABC. I've decided I will veto that, and a veto, I'd ask legal, how many votes does it take to override a veto?
Seven.
So it would take seven votes to override a veto. So what we can do, I think we should take the original straw poll again and see how many votes there are, and if there are less than seven, then I can, you can count on me vetoing that, and then you, we can talk about it, and then we have two other... talk about it. And then we have two other offers, one from McKeonan and one from Townsend about a way forward. And those two are, one, to sort of put the $400,000 in escrow, if you will, for ABC, until certain criteria are met. The other one by Townsend is to put that $400,000 back into CDBG for housing development, that would be available for anyone to apply for, and we would need to set up some clearer criteria, clearly, for everyone to agree to. So those are the three things that are on the table right now. But I think we need to, I think we have an obligation to retake the original straw poll with the way it was originally intended by the group, and then see what way we have forward from there. Commissioner Bynum, did you have a question?
Mayor, I have a whole page of notes around the application process, and I won't take our time now, if there will be time later, perhaps at a strategic planning session.
Absolutely.
I see many, many, many opportunities for improving the application process.
Agreed. Commissioner Townsend? Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I was, first of all, just extend my appreciation to the work that has been put in by the standing committee on this. And again, I was told I had six months to use my newbie card. I think I have about two and a half more months, so I'm going to, I'm going to milk it. I'm going to get all of the value that I can out of it. So as I'm continuing to learn and be a sponge to all of these processes, I do want to just say for the record that there has been a CDC in my district that has stepped forward to say that they were not aware that these funds were available, and had they been aware, they would have applied for them. Now, whether or not that is, you know, we could debate that a lot of different ways. Maybe, you know, they got it too late, I don't know. But I do want to state for the record that there is an organization in my district that has said, and unsolicited from me at least, made me aware that if they would have known that these funds were available, that they would have in fact have applied for these funds. So I think I agree with the plan that, or the idea suggestion that Commissioner Townsend has put forward in terms of giving those opportunities to other organizations. Again, I admit my ignorance on some of these matters, but at the same time, I'm trying to operate in the essence of fairness, knowing I'm sitting next to a lawyer, in terms of this, the letter of the law, but the essence of the law as well. So I would petition from that posture. Thank you.
Commissioner Townsend, and Commissioner Walters.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that I'm not advocating when I say everyone should be treated equally, trying to impose rules that were not written. I take full ownership in what I told NIDAC last year, because it's the fair thing to do. At the meeting, and by that I mean not sit on money, if you are not already ready to go with your project in the year that you get it, and if you already have money that you have not used. The money that we're talking about can also be used for emergency home repair. When you have an emergency home repair fund that was zeroed out, I think it is patently unfair that money just be pooled in a situation. That's why I told NIDAC I could not support you if you did not use or eat what you had on your plate, so to speak. I'm not saying there was a rule, but this is a matter of equity and fairness. If you're going to zero out an account where we go from $400,000 to help people that may have sewer problems, or need of a roof, or need of a furnace, just to put it in bricks and mortar. So.
Commissioner Walters.
So in general, I see some policy issues that have been raised that we have opportunities for improvement on. I see more implementation issues that we probably have an opportunity for improvement on. And I see commissioners and the board of commissioners makes policy, staff implements those policies. So I think the conversation has been sort of focused on the commission, but there's a lot of opportunities for improvement here as we go forward. I would like to comment on the idea of reconsidering the application by ABC. I've responded to a lot of RFPs in my life. And when I, when we received an RFP from somebody, from an organization that we thought we had a really good relationship with, and we received an RFP that we were not expecting to see, or that we had no idea what it contained, we saw that as a real breakdown on our part. I think the organizations that are now coming out and commenting that if we had only known, we would have done this, or the organizations that have forwarded us promotional material about their successes, which is all great, but if they're trying to comment about the process and their lack of participation, I think they probably need to look in the mirror a little bit and question just how close a working relationship they have with the UG, either the commissioners, or the mayor's office, or the UG staff. And maybe those relationships need to be worked on a little bit. So I do not think that this money should be reallocated to other groups. There will be a new and improved process next year. And as Hal said, I hope they all apply for it and move the county forward. Thank you.
Commissioner Kane.
I agree with Commissioner Walters, and what he just said, you know, everything we've done in the past is, we make a decision now, and we make modifications for the following year. And we've done that the whole 10 years I've been here. I don't believe there's any reason to change now.
All right. I believe we're ready to take the straw poll. The original straw poll was to allocate the $400,000 to ABC, as discussed 10 days ago on our Monday position. So if you would support the original proposal to allocate $400,000 to ABC, would you raise your hand? Commissioner Murgia, would you like to vote?
Yeah, I would vote in favor of that.
Okay. That's six votes in favor, which is a majority to carry action. I would veto that if it were upstairs for a vote, and then we would need to override, either override the veto, or we would need to come up with an alternative from one of the two, or another one that someone else could propose in terms of that. So I would determine we, excuse me? No, Commissioner Murgia says yes. Commissioner Murgia was number six. There were six. It's okay. So the question now is, we have before us the escrow of ABC money to hold it for them, or the opening it up to other groups? Do, I don't know if people care in what order we take these two. Commissioner Kane.
Is anybody upset with what he just did with the veto, that he wants to veto? I've been here 10 years, never seen it. Never seen it. And what happens, if he doesn't get his way, then he goes around the bushes, shakes them all up, and then has another revote. And this is wrong. Mayor, you should be bringing us together as a group, instead of splitting us up. And by your threat right out of the gate that you're going to do a veto, shows lack of leadership. The way it should have been done is exactly what we were talking about earlier. We made this decision, and you said, and you said you would go along with the majority of the commission when we were absent commissioner. Now we're at that point where the majority of the commission has spoken, and then you try to bully the commission by saying, "No, I don't like what you said. I'm going to veto it." And that's, that's absolutely the wrong thing to do. That's why I was sitting there trying to think, "Why are you threatening us right out of the gate?" And then you throw that out there, "Well, if I don't like what I'm doing, I'm going to do this." And we are splintered, and you're not helping. And I'm extremely disappointed that you would throw that out there and act like, "Well, what do you do? Because I'm the mayor." Well, we're all elected to represent the people. The majority of the people have spoken. And what you're talking about has never been you since I've been here. In fact, when I got back on the commission, we reversed a veto of Carol Marinovich's. And for the folks that if this is in your area, and you worked your tail off on a separate committee, and you did something that you felt proud of, and then you got raked over the coal scrubber, you'd be extremely disappointed. And we are not where we're supposed to be. We're supposed to be a unit. We're supposed to be representing the entire community. And it's frustrating for me when we stand there, when the majority says we're going to do this, and I realize we have a strong mayor, but this is ridiculous. We don't, we don't throw that power out there like, "I'm going to do it no matter what you folks say." Because if this issue was in your area, or something going on in your area, and you were on that committee, think about how that committee feels.
All right. There are two recommendations on the table. One is the escrow option, and the other is Commissioner Townsend's to just open it back up for further consideration. So Commissioner Bynum?
Can you explain the first one again, the escrow option?
Let me see if I can explain it. That the $400,000 would be set aside, and ABC would not have access to that money, and correct me if I'm wrong, McKeonan, until they met some criteria that we set up, that we would set some benchmarks. And when they reach those benchmarks, whether it's a percentage of their spend, or a certain amount complete, then they would get the additional $400,000 released to them. But the money would not be eligible for anyone else until ABC had either met and received the money, or not met and had the money go back to others. So it would be held, and we would have to determine an amount of time, presumably that it could be held, for them to reach those benchmarks before it were released. So that's that option. The other option is to simply put it back for economic development and housing, eligible for anyone to apply to, and we would need to set up the criteria of that application.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Do we flip a coin, and which one we take a straw poll on first? I'll take Commissioner Townsend's first. If you would support the reallocation of the $400,000 available to other groups, and we would need to set up the criteria for that, would you vote now? If you would support Commissioner Townsend's reallocation to other groups?
And Mayor, that would include ABC. That would be open to any group.
Any group could apply. Okay. One, two, three, four. Four votes. Commissioner Murgia, would you like to vote on that?
I've already cast my vote, Mayor, but thank you very much.
Okay. So if you would then take McKeonan's position of the ABC, to hold it in escrow for ABC with some criteria, would you vote now? Okay, four votes. Commissioner Murgia, would you like to vote on that one?
As I said, I already cast my vote, but...
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. All right. So we did not pass either of those. Is there an additional alternative that someone would like to propose at this time, or would someone change their position? Yes.
Mayor, I think the alternative is that you follow the majority, and don't use your veto power, as the majority has clearly spoken twice on this issue.
Okay. I will just restate what I said at the beginning. I think there is a look to this in its totality, that I have heard from many people, and I believe myself. I said I don't think anything illegal has happened. I don't think that it's the difference between impropriety and the appearance of impropriety. And I think these items, as a totality, don't look good, and don't present a fair process to our whole community. And I'm going to stand by that. I think we need a fair process. I would advocate for reopening this $400,000 up to other groups. I think that's a good option. Commissioner Walker.
Mike, we have to adopt a budget tonight, and we have to make some kind of a decision that will address this, or we're going to have to do it, we're going to have to, I don't know if we can even delay adopting the budget. I'm not changing my view about ABC and the escrowing of the money. But what I would suggest, in order to get us off this hook tonight, is that we allocate the $400,000 for bricks and mortar, and at a later date, we come back and decide whether we're going to put it in escrow, or we're going to put it in, open up the process. Now, I don't know that anybody's going to change their vote by doing it later. I'm not trying to suggest that. I just think, if we're not going to make a decision tonight, we can't adopt the budget, or we can't adopt at least one piece of the budget, and we're going to have to continue until we do.
Commissioner Townsend?
I think that's a reasonable alternative. It sounds to me pretty much like what we were talking about before. We do have to get off a stop.
No, we're not agreeing that we're going to open up the process. We're going to defer whether it stays in escrow, or we open up the process until later.
Okay, I still think that sounds...
To me, that's different. That's not saying that we're going to all of a sudden open it up to these other groups. I'm just trying to get us through tonight, and we can, we can do something on this next week, next month, whenever, after maybe a cooling down period from it.
Let me ask this, just for clarification. Are you saying it would automatically, I get the bricks and mortar, but would it automatically, could an escrow still go to the entity that we were talking about?
No, we'll have to decide whether it goes to ABC, or whether we open it up to everybody else.
Okay, so that's still on the table then? Okay.
Unless somebody has an idea of how we're going to move votes tonight.
That sounds reasonable to me. And just so, again, I'm clear, we do have $300,000 in the emergency fund.
Yes, that is correct.
That sounds reasonable.
Commissioner Bynum?
I think one of the questions that's been bothering me from the get-go was, if I didn't make this question clear before, in prior years, when the CDBG budget was adopted, was that an automatic allocation of those funds to certain entities? Has it...
Say that again.
What has struck me all along about this particular process is, by adopting the budget, we are automatically allocating dollars to certain entities. And I'm trying to grasp whether that has traditionally been the process.
Commissioner Markley?
In the past, we have allocated to specific projects. It's not required, as I understand it, Wilba, that we do that, but it's made the process easier than having a committee go and discuss adopting a budget, and then having the committee come back later and decide which projects the budget was going to go to.
Because I've been struggling with, all along, why can't we adopt the budget and then allocate the money? Why are those things so intricately tied together? That's it.
We have done it both ways. So we have done it where we've just approved it, where you could do, similar to what was brought up, that you could just say, "This is for housing and economic development," and then you'll award to those later. It's just, we join the process somewhat to avoid doing it twice.
All right. So we have a third option that I will call limbo.
That's a good option.
Where we will put the $400,000 in limbo, neither allocated nor not allocated, to come back to a later time, which will allow us to pass our five-year plan in a timely manner tonight, and to make this decision another time. Is that articulating it correctly?
Well, except for, the limbo has a name. Limbo Bricks and Mortar.
Bricks and mortar, thank you. No, that's right. It is still, we're still holding onto the bricks and mortar component, because I don't think there was disagreement in terms of whether or not we would do that. All right. Yes.
And Wilba, just for clarification, the bricks and mortar, I think we would need to call that for housing and economic development purposes?
Yes, we could call it something like redevelopment.
And that would meet the HUD standard?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. We have that option on the table. Is there, I'll take a straw poll. If you would vote for this new category, would you raise your hand? Commissioner Murgia, everyone here has raised their hand. Would you like to vote? Would you like to vote?
I would support the group.
Okay. I would support this as well. I think that's an excellent idea. All right.
Thanks, Hal.
Thank you, Hal. Thank you, all of you. I do want to say, I do appreciate the, the caliber of this dialogue. It was unhappy, but I will say, I appreciate everyone expressing themselves in, in an appropriate way. So thank you very much for that. If we can do that well, and at, and at that time, we significantly disagree, I think that's a good sign. All right. I'll turn it over to Mr. Bach. We have a couple of housekeeping items before we go upstairs to vote on the budget.
Okay. No, downstairs. If we can advance. The next slide is our Attachment A, which is basically amendments to the budget as I presented to the commission. So essentially, when you receive the action items tonight, you'll be approving the budget as I presented it, with these exceptions. Number one on this list for Attachment A is waiver of building fees, so it contemplates the fact that as we start 2016, we will have the reduction in the building permits, or we won't do the building permits, and then reduce, and the sewer connection fees. Impact on those two are stated up here. We projected about $66,500 in building permit fees, and $146,000 over in the sewer enterprise fund. Say we did that off a very conservative projection of housing, so it was not a real adverse number to go back and, back out of our budget. Number two is the SMID. Was there a recommendation by the straw poll that we would add $50,000 to the city, to this? This comes from the City General Fund. You all moved to put $25,000 toward the fare. That will come from our County General Fund. And then we asked to put $5,000 into transit, which will come from the City General Fund. So how I've accounted for that is, essentially, in the City General Fund, I've taken the $55,000 in increased expenses, and reduced them from the reserves line item, which is part of the operating account, but it's undedicated, but so it's the reserves line item. And then on the County General Fund, I've reduced that $25,000. Now, to take for the reduction in the revenue portions, what I've done is taken that down to the net change to the fund balance, so you have $66,500 in the City General Fund, and $146,000 in the sewer enterprise fund. So since we reduced our revenues in, I've lowered the bottom line in the fund balance. So in the city side, in 2016, that's projected at $2,354,000, and then in the sewer enterprise fund, we're at 4.3 million. That's how those end up. Also noting the fact that the mill rate, which I believe was your intent all along, but you approved us to do a maximum mill levy with a little bit higher, so I just made it clear here, we're approving it at the 26.845, and the 30.771, which was the recommended amount, which was no change to the mill rate. So approval of this, this will be attached to the main part of the budget, and I think it accounts for all your changes, and this is how it'll impact the budget. Okay. I did this, but this is the general funds.
Oh, I see. That's my question.
Okay. And then we have the CD budget, which is the next page. So it's a separate attachment that would, Attachment A that goes attached to the CD budget. What we've done here is increased the emergency home repair fund by $100,000, and then we've decreased the amount of money that was allocated toward the Argentine Highland Crest Economic Development by $100,000. And then, of course, when you make your motion for this, you'll just need to make the amendment that the money's directed toward housing and economic development without a specific awardee at this point. And I believe that accounts for the changes we've made. Any questions to that?
Is there a need, then, within the budget vote, to express the support for the proposal that Commissioner Townsend and Commissioner Johnson brought forward tonight for the master planning? Okay.
No.
Thank you.
At the risk of creating ire among my fellow commissioners...
Can you speak directly? You would create ire among us.
I, I, I know I'm going to be in trouble with all of you for bringing this up. And before I do, I want to say, I am responsible, at least in part, because I failed in my review of the applications to consider the one for doing work. Real work, I'm sorry. Doing real work. We funded the program last year. There were so many requests, and I tried to collaborate, most of my requests, if not all of them, with other commissioners, since I'm at large, trying to spread the money further. And I did not catch that the entity had put in an application. I, I feel very strongly that what they do is important in this community, and it is a function in which they, at least I am advised by those that deal directly with, with that group, that they, they do very well at, they're having as much or more success than any, anybody else. And we have not funded them. And it is not a high-budget request. It is, I believe, they asked for $50,000. If we use the same method to allocate charitable funds, I don't know that I would give them all 50, give them $50,000 next year, but I certainly would have sought out partnerships with some of you to make at least some of that finance occur. I know it's the 11th hour, and if you, if you want to say no, you say no, but I would like to see us find some money, whether we change the budget or not. I'd like us to find some money, because they're going to be hard hit if they lose our money. And I, I'm, I'm at fault. I'm at fault. I missed it. I, I missed it. I, I guess it just... So I'm asking, and you guys are going to have to decide whether you believe that it's worthy of any further consideration. I won't be mad at anybody, but I cannot feel good tonight when I go home if I don't ask this question.
This was funded through CDBG last year, so it, I would be inclined to say it needs to come out of CDBG this year. And the only money available in CDBG, we just placed in limbo. So I think the question is, if we wanted to put $50,000 towards that group, do, doing real work, and reduce the limbo fund to $350,000, we could do that. But I think that's the, I think that is the simplest path forward at this time. Commissioner Bynum?
I would defer to the committee members and staff, because I think it's a different category.
It is. It's social services.
And I think that category is spent.
Well, we would have to change the allocation is what we'd have to do, because there's not any, so, the social service money, remember, we had it all in bricks and mortar, then some, we went back and forth in terms of how much social service money for home repair. There's different allocations, so that's the only... Commissioner Markley?
We did allocate funds for several social service items that are typically allocated within our budget. There was an amount before we hit the cap, if I recall correctly, that was not spent.
Have we hit the cap?
We're close. I think, it's 15% of our allo, excuse me, it's 15% of our allocation. I don't have that with me right now.
Commissioner McKernan?
And I'll just go back, and this is one more reason why I say, if we truly value these things, maybe not this year, we'll figure this year out, but for future years, we figure out a way to fund this, not through CDBG, which is volatile funding, which is percent limited, we figure out a way to put these in monies that we control, so that we can fund these without hitting that 15% cap, or running up against a fund that gets taken away from us from the federal level. So I'll just go on record then with that.
Commissioner Philbrook, and then Walker.
So Commissioner Walker, I'm glad you brought that up, and, and so, he's like, oh, no, really. As you well know, those that were present when they were originally funded, I was one of their flag bearers, and really pushed hard for them to get, get into that program with our judicial system. And I do understand that they have done really good work and filled a gap that, that we needed there. And I agree with you, I think we need to find funds, whether we're this year or next year, but we do need to take care of that area of our judicial, because it does make a big difference as to whether somebody shows up to court and/or gets subpoenaed or warranted in, because they don't understand the system. So that makes a big difference.
I, I'm only going to say, in the past, over many years, we have used general tax revenues to support charitable funding. It hasn't always been out of CDBG.
Okay.
I think in the argument on this gentleman's behalf, or his entity's business, is every man or woman, that he keeps out of jail, and keeps working, and keeps moving forward, does not cost us, when that person becomes a recidivist and goes back to jail. And we pay every, every, for every day. But again, I'm, I'm in the 11th hour, in the 11th minute of the 11th day, and I'm, I'm...
The 11th year.
I'm, I'm not, I'm trying to undercut myself. I, I believe in this particular work. I think it's important, and he's doing good work, and we should find a way, whether we do it tonight, or whether we do it next week. So I spoke my piece.
Could we take 25 out of CDBG, and then 25 out of the general fund, to get this accomplished?
I think we can do whatever the commission assigns the administrator to do.
You got the figure?
Yes. What is the figure?
15% of our $2 million budget is 303,000. We have room for $50,000.
I suggest we do that.
And I'm saying that using my telephone, which I'm not all that sure of, instead of a calculator.
It probably works better than...
None of us know how to use our phones. It's, it's easy to admit. Okay. We have a recommendation that it could be come out of that $400,000. Let's take a straw poll. Are people willing to reallocate $50,000 of that $400 for doing real work? If you are willing to do that, please raise your hand. Commissioner Murgia, would you like to vote? We have five, six, one, two, three, four, five, six. We have six votes to do it. Okay. So we now have $350,000 in aforementioned bricks and mortar limbo for economic development and housing, and we now have $50,000 for doing real work.
Please, nobody hit me when I leave here.
There has been a request...
Hal will be buying dinner for everyone.
Okay. We do have errors and omissions. You do have this in writing. I would just ask you to make reference to these. Are there any of these that are substantive and non-clerical?
No. Mayor, these were just, as every year, when we put out a 500 and some-page document, and then we go through it, we always find some things that the budget staff needs to go through and correct on pages, change words, or they'll find something that was left out, and none of this is substantious, anything substantive from the policy decision-making you've been making through the year. They're all things that are consistent with the thought process. And then we also attached, and we just didn't get to it, but we had the question that was asked, it was about the overtime versus the, the salary savings in the sheriff's department. That was also put in your budget package on July 27th, so you got that answer back as well.
All right. If, Mr. Walker, do you have any more revisions to propose? All right. We are adjourned from this session, and we will reconvene at 7:00 for the adoption of our budget.
Will? Will? I got you. Good.[1650.33]